Meeting. Just need to read a small notice. Pursuant to the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while the option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided, as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the Board of Appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearing shall only be heard during such public hearings. The phone number to call if you wish to be there by phone is 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom link is available on the website, the town website. And we are going to open a continued public hearing on 8 Coolidge Street. Daniela Santos and Aniston Silva. They're looking for a special permit under 195-61, a limited accessory apartment, and any other relief deemed necessary. Someone here to speak tonight?
Hello.
Good evening.
Again, good evening. So we did provide like-
Get your name and address for the record.
Daniela Santos, 8 Coolidge Street, North Chelmsford, Mass., 01863.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we came in January requesting, how do you call the-
Special permit?
Exactly, the special permit for any law apartment to, for our barn. We do have a small apartment there. And you guys told us that it needed to be attached to the house. So we needed to get a plan with the engineer. So we did get that and we did provide that. So we want to make sure that's in accordance to what you guys would like us to do.
So what's on, what's on the screen this evening is that revised plan. It didn't make it onto the electronic agenda. I apologize. Do we have extra copies far enough for the board members?
What is this? I have a couple of them passing around.
We're passing around what's on the screen, which is the updated plan showing the porch, proposed porch, with what's attaching the existing-
This is more large scale.
-house and existing-
Where's the, where's the figures?
Do you have the dimensions on that?
I'm not seeing them here. This is stamped by a professional engineer, but I do not see the room sizes for the accessory apartment. It's 23'1" by 29.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it does say approximately 670 square feet. So the enclosed non-heated porch would be a common area.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And you have a stairway going to the second floor on the barn area?
Which part can you explain? Can you come here so I can give you details, please, my husband?
Hi.
Yes.
I get your name and address for the-
Aniston Silva, 8 Coolidge Street, North Chelmsford. Yes, it's stairs inside of the apartment. That show is on the plan. And there's another stairs on the back of the apartment going to, both going to the second floor.
Are there-
This may show a better-
A single, are there two separate apartments there?
No, 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 they are connected.
They are connected. So the square footage I have for the first floor is 670 feet. Does that make it-
Upstairs was just an open space that used to be my main cave, but has a stairs going upstairs. But the apartment is on the first floor.
So the second floor is not used in it.
No.
But it's accessible through the space.
Is outside the space? There's not-
I don't know how that works. Jose, do you have any thoughts on? I don't know, I don't know what that means.
What is the concern?
You're allowed 750 square feet to an in-law. This footprint on the first floor is 670 square feet. The second floor above it is an additional 670 square feet.
Are you making your accessory two-story, the accessory apartment, two stories?
It's already there.
Right, the barn is, the barn is already there, right?
Yes.
Pre-existing.
Yes.
First and second floor are already there.
Okay.
They're designating the first floor-
As the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
And the second floor is going to be your main house, belong to the main house?
No, it's, it's-
Or storage?
Used, used to be like an attic. We ju, I just when I was living there, I just turned into my main cave.
But it's trying to be to the main house, not, not part of the accessory, right?
It's not part of the-
If you get the drawing, you can kind of see it.
It's hard for me to, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, it is hard for me to-
No, no, on the next one, Evan, if you go up, you can see, yeah, keep, like there. That's a really good way to see it. So you're coming out, that's the back of the house. You're coming on to the deck and then going up to a second story.
You see through the stairway, is this stairway right here?
So that pitch goes to the main house though, right? And that bottom portion, all of that already exists?
Yes.
You're not adding anything?
No.
They're adding this section right here.
Just the porch.
Creating an L to the, to the barn. So this, right now, this is the existing house. This is the existing barn, this is the existing garage.
Okay.
And then they're adding this section right here, this L-shaped section that connects the two, which is a requirement to have an accessory apartment.
But that doesn't, since it's communal, doesn't-
It doesn't add to the 670 feet.
And they're allowed 750, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's also a second floor above it. And I'm just trying to understand how Jose interprets that. I mean, do we-
So if, if we go back to the beginning, when Fire Prevention and I went to Mr. Silva's house, there are two apartments in the barn, one on top, one on bottom. How they're going to combine both to keep it under 750 square feet? I don't know, but it is my understanding that it should be to that limit of 750 square feet.
Without, yeah, without a variance.
So, so right now, it looks like two apartments in that barn?
There are two apartments, one on top, one on bottom.
Fully equipped kitchen hall?
They were converted illegally.
Okay. Are you planning to-
Like I say, it used to be my main cave. And my son's living upstairs. If that's the issue, we can block upstairs. We're not, we're not using that. We can block the second floor if that's the case. We can build walls over there, whatever.
You're saying that it's not, it's no, no, even the main cave is not even there anymore?
No, we don't, we don't need the second floor anymore. That's the thing. If, if the town wants us to block the area so nobody has access, we can do it. We don't need that area.
I mean, have you eliminated the kitchen portion or-
We can rip everything off.
Into just a room?
Yes. Was a big room for, that barn is very old. That's what's storing hay for the farm that used to be there.
Right, right.
So I saw the empty space and I'm like, okay, I'm going to do my main cave in here, you know? But if that's the issue, like I say, we can rip it off everything, walls, ceiling, everything out of the second floor just to make sure my son stays on the first floor.
Do, are you comfortable with, would the board see fit to approve this with the limitation of the 750, I think is no problem? And in your inspectional process, you can, you can pay attention that it confirms? Is that, we don't, you know, I'm not trying to make it your only burden. I just don't know how to, we'll approve it specifically to 750 feet. And then the inspectional process will worry it. Should the board agree with that? I mean, I just don't know how else to define it because it's got the potential to be much bigger, obviously.
And can we, can we tell from here? Is it current, is there access to the second floor from the limited, from the apartment?
This is a stairway.
There's a little hall, a little entrance downstairs on the first apartment. And there's a stairs that goes upstairs. But there's doors blocking the access to upstairs.
So, I mean, is there a way that we would-
I think that we just need to consider, our job is to decide if they've met the requirements for a limited accessory apartment and set the size of it at 750, which is the maximum allowable. And the building inspector is going to worry the, you know, making sure that it complies to the town requirements.
But if they, if they, if they were to distinguish no access from the apartment to the second floor, no access, like there's no stairs, there's no doors, like sealed, right?
But I think that Jose will worry about that in the inspectional process.
Would that be acceptable though, if we put that?
As long as it's connected to the main house and one of the space have to be off limit to the 750 square feet approved by the board?
Yes, sir?
You know, I don't know if it's, it's a cost to the applicant, but if you bring, if you look at that diagram, the addition they're putting on the back, there's a space where the two, the addition touches the proposed apartment. If they put stairs there to the upstairs and eliminated the stairs in the room, then you would be guaranteed that they wouldn't go beyond that first floor space.
They wouldn't be able to access it from the accessory apartment?
Right, they could access it from the addition, but that's part of the main house anyway.
I mean, I think for us, we just need to decide whether the accessory department, and we can set the size of that, complies. And I think Jose and his inspectional process can worry whether it is, you know, if it's, if it meets the requirements of a, of an LLA. So we don't really have to worry it.
Now, it's going to expand.
It, it can expand, but that would, you know-
As long as you understand that it has to be-
No, like I say, we don't, we don't mind to open the walls upstairs and, and rip it off everything so nobody can use the area for. Like again, we don't need the area.
The area to the upstairs, it's like, it's, like we said, it's closed from the, from the apartment. So you can, you access the same door that you can go to the apartment, but it's a door going to the apartment and then the stairs going upstairs. So it's not, you can't access like directly, you know? The stairs not inside the apartment.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's like an external stairs?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Not to complicate things, but the reason this was originally in front of you was that it was a detached structure. And that was complicated. So if they go to the, the building department and pull a permit to put the, the enclosed non-heated porch, I'm not sure they even need the special permit from the zoning board at that point. Because it would be, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be detached.
If they want designation as an LLA, they would.
No, the LLA is only for-
But they could just consider it a bedroom.
Well, the only reason that you need ZBA approval is if it's new construction or detached.
But the new construction of the-
The porch would not be-
So they could go for the porch and then not go ahead.
Right.
The other question I wanted to ask is, and if that's the case, maybe it's moot, but are they required to have an interior access to the home?
Yes.
There's no, there's no interior access to the LLA?
It's got to be connected.
So where, where that L comes in, I think a door there would, would meet the needs.
So then they could just pull their application?
Right, right there, yeah.
They could pull the application from us?
If, if their intent is to build an LLA-
And it's not a new structure because it's pre-existing?
They've come up with the solution of attaching the two structures. And Jose, correct me if I'm wrong, they come in and build the porch first, then it's, the barn is no longer detached.
It's attached, yeah.
And under the LLA bylaw, it's existing square footage detached to the main house. As long as it's under 750, it'd be by right.
Well, I see it that way, but I also see it that, again, whether it was today, I mean, whether, let's suppose that that barn wasn't there today and they were going to build it the way they did it, they would still have to need a special permit.
Yes, that's-
So I'm going to, I'm going to, oh, you know. And again, I don't, I don't want to jeopardize the board's decision today, but whether it's connected or not, I just see it, I just see it like if it wasn't there, that they are proposing it for the first time, even though it's been there.
Yeah.
Because legally, legally, those units should not be there.
The, the first and second floor units should not be. And as part of this approval, we would need to have a doorway connecting the two to an interior space. You can't exit outside and then come back in. Right. Do you understand what we're saying there?
Yes.
I mean, my suggestion would be that small little L, if you put a doorway there, that would, that would let you comply. Just behind the stairwell there. Do we have any further questions from the board of the applicant?
Yeah, I have, so you guys are going to live in the house and your son's going to live in the LA, LLA?
My cousin's living in the house right now.
It says owners, but you, you guys, is they, are they, are they the new owners?
No, they're, they're our family now.
Well, that doesn't meet our bylaw.
A page you're on Charlie.
Yeah, because I know you said that before. You said something like your cousin lived there or something and you rented it to him. Yeah, this doesn't meet the bylaw, Brian.
Extended family, blood parents.
1-95-6.1.
The LLA has to be located within an owner-occupied dwelling?
Correct. Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
So to allow a limited access, single-family dwelling for an extended family members of the owner. So who owns? So you own it, okay. And who's going to be living in the limited access?
My son.
Okay, so she's the owner and extended family is her son.
Oh, if your son owns it, I guess we're fine.
No, she owns the house. It doesn't say she has to occupy the house.
But she's not living there.
It doesn't say she has to live there, it says she has to own it.
So that's my reading of it.
Let's read it again.
No, no, I-
It says owner-occupied.
Yeah, in the definition.
What are you doing? I can buy your new one. That's it. Front page.
But they can still avoid that then if they're just seeking the L then, right? And not the LLA?
Well, it, can we override that technicality or something?
I'm, I'm just trying to understand if, if you're reading it as I am.
You looking at definitions, Brian?
Objectives, should it be a definition?
Could it be number two?
Definition.
Yeah, it does say owner-occupied as existing as date of application.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I need to have my son show the B?
So I, I take the apartment is an area within an owner-occupied existing family dwelling.
That's not something the board can resolve.
So, and Jose, I guess I'll ask for your opinion as well. Does she need to live in the house to qualify the way you interpret this?
Yeah, it is my interpretation. It's clear that it's got to be owner-occupied at the, as existing as of the date of the application, which is, if we want to consider that today or that they submitted, they were not, she was not living or-
I was living there with the civilian, actually. I'm just moving back.
If their son was on the deed, would that be an avenue that this would be?
I mean, anybody on a deed of the house is considered an owner, so.
And he'd be occupying.
We don't regulate who lives in the LLA. And it could be the, could be the mother-
It could be the cousin of my blood.
Could be the mother and father and the children that live in the main house. You're just required to be owner-occupied.
If he's written on the deed though, would he have to live in the main home?
He could live in either one.
He could live in either one, okay. That's what I'm, it's clear for me now.
So in order to approve this, you would have to add your son to the deed?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
With that in mind, I think that we'll continue this and still-
Are either of you, either of you on the deed?
Yeah, both of us.
Okay, so the son does not need to be on the deed to live in, the owners, the owners that are on the deed need to live in the house, live somewhere on the property.
So if the son was considered an owner on the deed?
No, as long, as long as one of these two people are on the deed, it's owner-occupied.
But they don't live there.
But they don't live there.
Oh, they don't live, actually live there.
No.
My apologies.
Okay, so if the son was on the deed, he would be considered an owner as well. And then they could have the application go through.
Right.
So I'm going to suggest you continue this until your son is on the deed and then-
In the stairway.
I think, I think you've complied. That doorway is certainly an issue.
Yes.
And I think that you'll deal with Jose about how we define the second floor as a living space that's not part of the LLA.
Not a problem.
Okay, with that, can I ask for a motion to continue until-
May 5th.
June? Oh, May, wait, wait, I'm only thinking way out of it. May 5th.
I make a motion to a continue 8 Coolidge Street application till May 5th.
Second half, man. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Yep, see you in a minute.
Why do I keep?
What was being made? Charlie, good catch.
Good catch. I'm going to send both. Good catch, Charlie. Oh, that's why. See? You need to fix it though.
I didn't.
You need to fix it. You need to rewrite that. Okay. I need a new warrant and town meeting. They don't need it. They don't need it. New warrant for town meeting.
I think we read the letters in the last time, but I'll go back and re-read.
Oh, this was only one from Fire Prevention, I believe.
Okay, so.
Is this how the document is filed? We have the letter from Fire Prevention.
Fire Prevention wrote one letter for all the projects.
Oh, they, yeah, I see, okay.
Right?
Uh, individually.
Oh, they, I'm sorry, police.
Police wrote no comments for all of them. And Fire Prevention wrote a separate letter for each of them.
Our next hearing is 203 Conquered Road. James Trager for a limited accessory apartment, Section 195-61 for a special permit and any other relief that may be deemed necessary to construct in addition to an existing dwelling for use as a limited accessory apartment. Parcel is in the residential B, District Map 134, Block 45, Lot 2. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Edward Savard. I'm representing Massey and James Trager, 203 Conquered Road. I live in 33 Heinz Lane in Pelham, New Hampshire. They're looking for a special permit for an accessory apartment, limited accessory apartment. And James and Massey plan on living in the apartment and their daughter and her husband will live in the main house. The, the addition meets all the setbacks and we have an approval from the conservation that we already-
Went through the process?
Oh. Am I missing? It says, this says Trager. This says, but this says Savard? Oh, my, where is that?
So I see your plans here.
I'm the contractor.
Yeah, do you have a square footage of the LLA?
It's going to be just a little under the maximum. It'll be like 739 square feet, I believe.
Some relief there for a few different items anyway, so that may, that would be-
Well, there is like a mudroom that we wanted to add on in the front where they take off their, before they come in, which would be unheated. And that's approximately like 60 square feet.
I have the floor plan up.
Was it the bathroom is excluded, Evan, is that correct?
Um, the plan shows total LAA of 737.
That 235 square feet in that room includes the bathroom.
I know stairways, which you don't have are excluded. I'm not sure the bath is. But we're there anyway, so that's fine.
The bath, the bath should be part of the LLA.
It's included, it's just the stairway. There was something else, oh, common area. So I'm guessing this area to the right of the bathroom is a, an additional-
That's the bedroom of the main house. It's, that's a closet there.
I'll let these guys ponder this a minute and I'll read some of the letters in if I can. Is this the only letter that's included with this?
No comments from Board of Health or Police.
I think I have to read it, isn't that so? The Board of Health regarding 203 Conquered Road has no comment. Okay, so this is a group letter, if you would, stating that Lieutenant Jason Empor has no concerns for 203 Conquered Road. And then I have a letter from the Chelmsford Fire Department. Proposed limited accessory apartment at 203 Conquered Road. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at 203 Conquered Road and finds the following. The entire home shall be upgraded to comply with the latest addition of the Massachusetts State Building Code for smoke, heat, and carbon monoxide detectors. The proponent shall submit plans for review to the Fire Prevention Office via the Town of Chelmsford online permitting portal. All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors required shall be marked on the plans prior to submission for review. The department is concerned that there's more than one dwelling on the property and that occupancy should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as 203 Conquered Road and 203A Conquered Road. Both addresses must be made visible on the building to the street. The applicant shall make an application for the addresses to the Chelmsford E911 Committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Druiz. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded on the deed. It is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve this plan with these conditions. I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Kostofis, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. Those are the only letters I have. Are there any questions of the applicant at this time from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to a public comment. If anyone would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this project, now is the time. I don't know if anyone is on Zoom. Do we have?
No one's on Zoom.
No one's on Zoom. So with that, I guess I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Brian?
Second.
Second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous? We can take this up?
Yeah, it meets all the setbacks, and it's a nice little setup, and it meets all our bylaws. So I'd like to make a motion to approve 203 Conquered Road Limited Access Apartment, section 195-6.1, for a special permit for a limited access apartment.
I second the motion.
Second by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck with it.
Thank you. Do I, can I get a copy of that from the Fire Department, or do I?
You certainly can, yeah.
Don't have a copy on you right now.
Do you have an email address?
We'll provide one to you.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
It's the standard of smoke upgrades.
Right.
Bedrooms, stairways.
Okay.
Heat detectors in the garage, pretty straightforward.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Steve, good sir. Good luck with it.
Okay, Steve.
Mine, oh, hearing's good.
Our next hearing is 32 Fifth Lane, Michael Purrington. The applicant is applying for a variance under 195.9 relating to the conformity and section 195.8 relating to the non-conforming or any other relief deemed necessary. The applicant would like to construct a 26 by 24 addition to his home, which will make the existing structure more non-conforming, as well as encroach on the side setback requirements. Parcel is in the RB District. Do we have someone to speak for, Michael, this evening?
I am Michael Purrington, 32 Fifth Lane.
Thank you.
Representing myself. I have materials here that didn't get included.
This is your.
I'm out on this one.
And so Nancy will be recusing herself from this hearing, but it doesn't affect her, it just affects us.
I don't need to leave, right? I can just sit here?
You should, you.
I should leave?
You could glare or something, and it would be a problem.
Your non-verbal cues could influence us.
Correct, correct. Some plans, I don't know if you have the website. Michael, if you want to tell us what you're doing?
Sure. So 32 Fifth Lane, which is on Hart Pond, we've been there for 17 years. Looking to build an addition. Our main reason is our house has a spiral staircase that's, you know, pretty gnarly, and there's not really any good way to change it. It's a contemporary house. We've got a big catwalk there that's got steel in it. So really, the best way to, to get space to put in a real staircase is to go off the side of the house and put on an addition. The size that was in, that you mentioned, just wasn't correct. It's, the size that we're going for is 14 by 26. The current house is non-conforming. We're looking to make it slightly more non-conforming. As of right now, all four sides of the house have some sort of limitation. At the street, the sewer easement pretty much touches the house. On the south side, we've got a setback for the pond that we live on, conservation setback. Both sides, the lot's only 50 feet wide, so the house doesn't conform with 25-foot setbacks at all. Currently, the minimum setback we have is seven feet, which is on the southwest corner, it's the other side of the house. On the side of the house that we want to put the addition on, we're at a minimum of 13 right now, and we want to reduce that to five, which is why we're here. We're looking for either a special permit or a variance to increase that non-conformity.
It's just, it's just wetlands on that side?
It really is, uh, there's a lot in that paper bag, isn't there?
So I think as far as the, the constraints go, what I have on page four shows, kind of highlights where, where the lines are and where our option to build anything actually exists.
Can you tell me a little about what is on the left side, labeled Detail A? Is that, is that another house, another home property there, is that?
Yeah, so there's, there's homes on both sides. On the side where the proposed addition is, there's a house. From my house, it's about 40 feet away. The, the lots there are all super skinny, we're all 50 feet wide. It's on the lake, so it's typical lakefront, you know, skinny lots that are really long.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Belansky, I think, called it a bowling alley, which I thought was an appropriate representation of it.
But they wanted to get down, everybody wanted a piece of the water. So the land we're talking about now are formerly McGrath, Finnbar, and.
Finnbar McGrath is the property that abuts the side where the addition is.
Okay.
And he, I have a letter that I've attached to the, the back from Finnbar, as well as another neighbor.
Just so I'm orientating the, the brown house is yours, right?
That's right, yes.
Okay, just so I'm making.
No worries.
Sure I'm orientating properly. Is this, is this looking from the front of your property?
Okay, so one of those photos is, is in our neighborhood. The purpose of those photos were just to show what houses are like on the lake as far as being really constricted together. One of those is our, is our neighborhood, and then the other one is the neighborhood on the other side of the, on the other side of the lake.
So this is not a perspective view from your property, it's just an overview?
No, one of them, you can see my property on the far, far right of it. The main house that you see in the center of it is, is actually Finnbar McGrath's house.
This one?
I think it's that one, yeah.
Contemporary style?
I'll tell you, I'll say. Mine is the contemporary one.
Okay, okay.
You can get a good look at it if you pull it up on here. If you pull it up on Google.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's where the addition. There's really nowhere else to look at it to pull it, right, so this is it, right?
It's a very unique build for the area.
I am going to read the denial letter from the building inspector. Dear Mr. Purrington, please be informed at this time, I am denying the application for a building permit to add a 26 by 14, which is the correct size.
That's, that's incorrect. Uh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, 26 by 14, yes.
Okay. Addition to your existing home, which requires a side setbacks of 25 feet, and you only show five-foot setbacks on your plans. You can appeal this decision within 30 days before the Board of Appeals at your earliest convenience. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have further questions. Respectfully, Jose Nigro. Might as well read the other letters while I'm at it. Chelmsford Fire Department, Fire Department Prevention Office. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at 32 Fifth Lane and finds the following. The entire home existing in new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by 780 CMR 51 standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. The applicant shall upload a plan showing all life safety devices to their building permit application. This office would approve of this addition with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Danielle Castoffice, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have an additional letter from the Board of Health with no comments. And I have a letter from the police department.
This is where you're planning, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
No worries.
I'm a visual person.
So I have, uh, a few other neighbors, a few other neighbors have submitted. Finnbar McGrath, which is a great name, I gotta say. To whom it may concern, I am writing in regard to the home addition project at 32 Fifth Lane in Chelmsford, proposed by Michael and Tara Purrington. I own the property at 35th Lane, which is a direct abutter to the 32nd Fifth Lane on the side of the proposed addition. I reviewed the project and support the Purrington's plans to construct a 26 by 14 addition and a covered porch on the east side of their home, which will be as close as five feet from our shared property line. We have a similar 50-foot wide property and understand that due to the unique nature of our lakefront neighborhood, the homes are closer together than in other typical neighborhoods. We wish the Purrington's luck in their project to build a more family-friendly home in this wonderful neighborhood. Finnbar McGrath. I have a second letter from Paula Wetmore. It says, to whom may concern, I, Paula Wetmore, would like to speak in favor of granting the variance for Michael Purrington at 32 Fifth Lane in Chelmsford. Thank you for your consideration. And she is at 45th Lane. And my last letter is from the Chelmsford Police, zoning Board of Appeals. There are no questions regarding 32 Fifth Lane. Respectfully submitted, Jason Poor, Lieutenant. Those are the letters that I have. Are there further questions from the board regarding this application?
Yeah, I was looking at the, the front and side rear setbacks from the date the building was built, the structure was built. And according to our zoning bylaws, if it was built between 1938 and 1954, the side rear setbacks are 10 feet. So, did you take that into consideration, Jose?
Um, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
There's different setbacks for different years the homes were built.
Right.
So, so what happened is everybody was coming in for a variance, so we put this in the bylaw to help people build something.
Yes.
Rather than go for a variance or a.
Yeah, that is taken into consideration. Unless I made a mistake with the setback, going to, I, I got the, the map that shows all the years.
Okay.
Going back to 1961, 1962, 63, prior to 1938.
Do you know how old your home is? Obviously, it's had a lot of work done.
The house that exists now was built in 75.
It's on a new foundation?
There is a new foundation, there's existing foundation, and I think it was one of those where they left up a wall and called it a renovation, but it's, 80% of the house is, is, was new in.
I thought that was built in the 1st century, sorry.
Bert Hamel has put the table of dimensions in, and he has, in agreement with the building inspector, thinks that the side yard setback is 25 feet.
It is.
It is certainly non-conforming. As it exists, it is seven feet from the property line. It's, it's obviously a, a unique-shaped lot, so we can consider that. Just. Have you been to conservation regarding this?
I'm in the process of putting together an NOI for conservation.
And I didn't, uh. But you're, you're staying with the proposed addition 50 feet out?
Yeah, that's intentional.
So you, they would need approval, but it's, it's pretty much.
Fire.
Yeah. You're certainly allowed to do it from 100 to 50, and then 50 to 25, which is probably why you placed it as you did, I would imagine. So it is, is still going to conservation, but I, I think it would be something they would be typically approving. So we don't need to worry it. Are there any further questions from the board regarding this application? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you are in favor and opposition to this, if you would like to speak, now is the time. Seeing none, we still have no one on Zoom, Evan? And I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Peter, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we can take this up. It is a variance. I think the hardship is fairly clear. They have seven feet now at the closest point. To go to five, I'm not in opposition to it. The closest neighbor is certainly not in opposition to it.
Right.
Who's.
Think all the neighbors are.
I, I don't actually know the location of 40, but she was also in favor of it. It seems we have no one speaking in opposition to placing it there. Unique lot shape.
I was just going to articulate, what I've heard is a lot shape due to its narrowness, pond, sewer easement, wetlands.
This would be topography. And I think it would qualify for a variance, the hardship being both topography and unique lot shape. And the placement of the sewer easement, actually, is another factor in this.
Definitely limits the usage.
I don't know if someone has a motion they'd like to present, or are there other concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for 32 Fifth Lane for a variance under 195.9 relating to conformity and 195.8 for the building of 26 by 14 addition to include all the letters read.
I don't know. Second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye. Glenn's all voted as well, yes.
Isn't it only five? They can vote?
Five it is.
Nancy stepped.
Nancy stepped up.
Had to recuse herself.
So you, you are voting in the affirmative?
Yes.
Is she unanimous? Good luck with it?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Paperwork will be available in a couple days. Our next hearing is 2 Indian Drive. David Caprino, looking for a variance under 195.9 conformity and section 195.8 related to the non-conforming structure, and any other relief that may be deemed necessary to construct a 25 by 23 garage to dwelling that will make the existing structure more non-conforming and encroach on the front yard, side yard setbacks. Parcel is in the residential B District. Is someone there to speak tonight? Yes, sir, if we could just get your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Dave Caprino from 2 Indian Drive, Chelmsford, Massachusetts. I'm here seeking the hardship variance to put a two-car garage on our Cape. And we have a letter from our neighbor that would be the touching property on the back. They see no problem, no problem with us doing that. We're, we have an older house that we purchased a year and a couple days ago, and we're trying to update. I've included some pictures of what the house looks like and what we have in the vision of what we want it to somewhat look like in the packet.
Thank you.
I think, I think the link that's on the agenda you're looking at and on the screen is an older plan. I believe you submitted a stamp plan?
This is the stamp plan that you have right there.
Okay.
It says, drop, prop the garage right there, it's overlaying a portion of existing.
February, February 20? February 20, do we have hard copies?
There's no stamp on that place.
The February 22 one is, is the one that you have stamped.
Yeah, sorry, February 22.
We'll just circulate that. Yeah, we'll circulate the updated one.
I have another copy if somebody wants to see it.
But no change to the number?
I believe the numbers.
I'm going to read the denial letter just for clarity. Mr. Caprino, please accept this letter as a denial to your proposed addition to the above addressed. The house sits on an RB District with setbacks requirements of frontage 40 feet, side 25 feet, and rear 30 feet. Your proposed plans show a 21.5 back setbacks, 16-foot plus or minus side setbacks, and 30 feet of frontage. Oh, the 30-foot frontage requirement. This decision can be appealed to the ZBA when 30 days of receiving this notice. Please feel free to reach out should you need further assistance on this project. Thank you. Respectfully, Jose Nigro, Building Commissioner. So just to ask Jose, are you considering the 121 feet to be rear or side? I, I would say the side, I just.
Lot 10?
Abutting lot 10?
Yeah, it's, I think it's half and half.
It is, it's a very strange location.
No, I understand, I, I just defer to the inspector, as he is responsible for interpreting. So would we consider the side setback? I mean, it's pre-existing non-conforming, but it becomes further non-conforming. I mean, I, I guess I will ask the obvious. I mean, I guess I will ask the obvious. Have you considered putting the garage on the other side? I know that's...
So, we have...
You would be here if you hadn't.
We've exhausted those sources, and the reason, we're trying to create a single-floor living, and that is, this old-style Cape has a one-car underneath that goes on that side of the garage, so it dips down. So, for us to do that, that would still create a two-floor living. We're trying to create for future...
Trying to create a single-floor living.
Simplicity of walking straight into where the kitchen would be, and that eventually just become a, you know, an excess garage, but kind of do landscaping down there, unless somebody wants some of the landscaping.
You're just going to sort of abandon the garage proper?
Yeah, pretty basically, you know?
Long-term storage.
Yeah, exactly. More storage, more junk.
We do commute.
We did exhaust that, and doing that, putting above it, the cost just went through the roof of the area.
It's certainly a unique lot shape.
There is, there is, there's a sewer line that comes out of the back of the house, and it swoops right where that driveway is right now.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. There's a sewer line that actually goes out the back of the house, and it swoops right where that existing garage is now, so that would be more cost trying to relocate that.
You'd have to relocate your sewer line.
Yeah, if we put the garage over there.
It's this one right here, right? If we're doing this as frontage.
And the porch is coming off?
The porch would be removed, and the garage would be replaced.
Removed, and so the garage is not spaced.
I believe the picture kind of shows it right over it.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just looking at how it was drawn. Okay.
So, where it says "proposed garage," that's actually the cement, so it's not as close to the property line as you think. That's where the driveway would be.
Right, so it's that 17-foot line?
Yeah.
Into the corner of the building to that lot line?
18, 18 off the property line is the...
Okay.
Is the stamped.
Oh, 18, okay. I don't have the stamped one right.
Okay.
I have a copy if anybody needs it.
Yeah, the 17 should be an 18 on the stamp.
Yeah, on the stamp. The 17 was my guess.
Is that on the 28-foot wall?
The 28, 23 corner.
On the porch wall.
It's 25 by 23.
So, that's been reduced as well?
I'm sorry, no, no, no.
No, it's 23 by 28, the proposed garage.
So, this one's, oh, so the 25 should be a 23, and the 23 should be a 28 on the digital we're looking at.
Oh, okay.
I can show you on the, if it helps everybody to see where it is.
Yeah, the wall connecting to the proposed should be 28.
28.
Yeah, from the back of the house to the front of the house would be 28.
28, okay.
And the side of the house out to the variance would be 23.
So, the front setback is not in compliance, the side setback slash rear setback as well. It's a pre-existing nonconforming, and we're increasing the nonconformity in two directions, to the front and to the rear.
RB?
The front is about a foot and a half variance.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly was thinking along the lines of trying to get that to 20 feet in the rear by shrinking that 28-foot, which, it's a good-sized garage at 28. To go to 26 wouldn't be too bad, but then to try to do the same in the front would really shrink it, so that's...
So, the reason why it's, where the back of the house is, the entrance to the house is right there off the kitchen, so there's no way to move that door...
The stairway.
Because there's stairs that go down to the basement. So, it's like a doorway that walks into the kitchen, and right to the right is the stairs that go down to the basement, so we couldn't offset the entrance to the house.
You'll be stopping your vehicles before those stairs.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. That's where the porch area is now?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm going to read the letters in. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
What's the date?
What's the which?
Date of the house?
63.
60, 63.
Okay. And it's, what do we decide? It's two fronts or two sides? Do we decide which, what are we looking at?
It wouldn't comply whether it was the side or the rear.
How much are you reading?
But either way, it wouldn't comply. It's not going to get, it's not going to shrink enough to become a special permit, even with the side lot setback, which is less than the rear. So, we could consider that the side, but it still wouldn't, it would still be a variance. So, regarding 2 Indian Drive, the Board of Health has no comments. Chelmsford Fire Department Fire Prevention Office has a letter to the members of the board. This office has reviewed the proposed addition at 2 Indian Drive and finds the following. As part of this project, a heat detector shall be installed in each garage bay. There must also be a combination smoke carbon monoxide detector present that is interconnected with the heat detectors within 20 feet of a door to the garage. All installed devices must be hardwired and shall be interconnected to the existing home's fire protection. All smoke detectors and other life safety devices shall be marked on the plan prior to submission for a building permit. This department approve of this plan with these conditions. I would ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Castoffice, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from, I can't honestly read the signature.
That's from the Morals. They're the abutting neighbor, one of the backyards.
Do you have, by any chance, I have the Morals. I have their letter, and I have another one that...
They're on 16 East Shepherd Lane?
Peelinger?
Oh, that's Plugis. That's my fiancee.
Oh, okay.
Priscilla Plugis.
This is your letter?
That's my letter, yeah.
Oh, that makes sense, okay. "We, David Caprino and Teresa Plugis, are writing to get approval to build an attached two-car garage to the left side of our house. We looked into putting the garage on the right side of the house, but that would require the use of a full set of stairs to access the main living area. Our attempt is to provide long-term living arrangement with single-floor living. We have a nonconforming-shaped lot, that is why we're filing for the hardship. The proposed two-car garage will be 25 feet wide, 23 deep, and that has changed."
That has changed, correct. That should be 28 by 23?
So, the proposed two-car garage would be 28 by 23. Along with the constructionist garage, we will be upgrading the siding. See attached picture, a new roof line over the picture window, front entrance. The new driveway entrance will be coming in from East Shepherd Lane and have a smooth transition into the garage. We've attached a diagram showing the approximate location and variances that would be needed in this hardship. Sincerely, David Caprino and Teresa Plugis."
So, when I...
You said the driveway's going up from Shepherd?
Yeah, I want to address that. When we proposed this letter, I had met with Jose, and he had the DPW go out, and we wanted to go straight out, because the property kind of goes out to East Shepherd, but there's not enough room on the curve.
For the radius.
For the radius for the setback, because there's also a fire hydrant there. So, then we proposed, when I met with the surveyor, we, I had him plop in what we intend to do.
So, you are coming off of Indian?
It's, still stay on Indian, correct. Yeah, that was, this was before we did that, because Jose had had the DPW.
It's a process.
Yep.
Regarding 2 Indian Lane in Chelmsford, sincerely, Dan and Beth Morrel. We reside at 16 East Shepherd Lane. As the abutting property, we are writing to express our support of the proposed variance to the reduction of the required setback for the addition of a two-car garage. We understand it will come about 15 to 16 feet from the property line and are okay with this. The renovation that David Caprino and Teresa Plugis want to do is exciting. We look forward to the improvements they are looking to do. It will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. Again, Dan and Beth Morrel. At 16 Shepherd Lane. And we have a letter from the Police Department regarding 2 Indian Drive. There are no concerns. So, that's our letters. Does the board have any further questions of the applicant?
No concerns.
What else? Yes, I did. Seeing none, we will open this up to the audience. If any of us questions or concerned on this project, now is the time. Still no one, is there? Seeing none, except a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Peter?
Second.
Second by Nancy. We can take this up?
All in favor?
Oh, yes, we should be all in favor. Power is going to my head.
So, this is a variance, right?
This is a variance.
Requires a designated hardship.
And I think the designated hardship would qualify with the lot shape. It's your interpretation, but it seems to be, the idea of putting it on the other side, looking at the plan, looks possible, but there is a garage under on the house that the goal is to have single-floor living. So, topography comes into play, but I think lot shape is really the one we can hang our hat on. We have the blessing of the abutting neighbor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve 2 Indian Drive variance under 195.9 conformity and Section 195.8 related to nonconforming structure to construct a 25, oh, no, it's 20...
28 by 20.
23 by 28 garage to the dwelling that will make the existing structure more nonconforming
and encroach on the front and side yard setbacks.
Should we list the hardship as we see it, or is that not necessary?
Well, your deliberation.
Would include, so they, it would show up in the, in the decision, yes.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is she unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Two of them. Two of them. Wow. Two of them. Our next hearing is 19 Horseshoe Road. Allison Bartolini, Section 195.9B for a special permit for 20% reduction to the required side setback for construction of an addition to the existing dwelling. Parcel is in residential B district. Good evening.
Leo Bartolini, 19 Horseshoe Road. So, I'm looking to, we're doing an addition and making our garage three and a half feet wider. It's currently at 25 and a half feet off the property. It'll end up at 21 and a half feet off the property line.
You're extend...
Do you want to look at this?
Oh, wait a minute. You're just extending the garage?
I'm making it a little bit wider.
Okay.
It's 20 feet wide now. I want to make it 24.
Adding four feet, okay.
That's going to be tough, huh?
Yeah.
Lot to go in and out just to get four more feet, but I can appreciate it for sure.
20 feet, it's narrow for big cars nowadays.
Yeah.
It's an old-style garage, it's narrow.
You should see my garage. Yes.
So, it is a special permit. We do not need a hardship. Are there any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. Why don't you just go to 20 feet rather than 21 and a half?
Oh, I just was making it 24 feet.
Okay, okay.
He has existing walls, exterior walls, right?
Yeah.
His existing exterior walls at the corner.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Am I reading this right? You live half in Westford?
Well, my house is all in Chelmsford.
But the property is half Westford.
The property is, yes. My backyard is.
So, you get two tax bills?
Mm-hmm.
You do?
Two tax bills, two stormwater drain-off bills.
No, you don't. You do?
Yeah.
Oh, you get that stormwater twice, too?
Yeah.
That's not right.
No.
I agree with you. I mean, I only own about this much land in Westford, so it's not that big of a deal.
That is, I guess, prorated in some sense.
Yeah.
And it has no structure?
No.
So, the real question is, do we use the setback based on the Chelmsford side of the property?
We do, because the home is in the Chelmsford side.
I'm...
Yeah, yeah. It could get complicated, though. You all right?
We can't use your Westford side. It's not ours.
Chelmsford Fire Department has a letter. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at 19 Horseshoe Road and finds the following. The entire home and existing new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems required by 780 CMR 51 standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. The applicant shall upload a plan showing all life safety devices to their building permit application. This office would approve of this addition on these conditions. I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Danielle Castoffice, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department.
And you're removing the corn. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
You're removing a corner that's in your garage, making it a full box? Is that what, am I reading that right?
No, no, there's a, like a sunroom off the end that we're taking off, and the garage is just going to go back the whole way.
The Board of Health has no comments. Letter from Allison Bartolini, but I don't think it adds anything new. And then a letter from the Police Department, which also includes 19 Horseshoe Road. They have no questions or concerns. There's no letter, there's no letter. The board have any further questions of the applicant at this time?
I forget if you opened it up yet.
I have not, but I thought I'd let you guys talk before. So, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the audience. If there's any questions or concerns regarding this application, now is the time. And just for clarity, we have no one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom.
Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Brian.
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
All in favor? The application is closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for 19 Horseshoe Road for the reduction of 20% setback under Article 195-9-B.
Letters.
Second.
It includes the letters, right?
Second by Nancy. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
She unanimous?
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Sam giving you a ride home?
No.
Okay, last and final is Seven Princess Ave, David Sprang, for a limited accessory apartment, Section 195.61 for a special permit and any other relief that may be deemed necessary, nonconforming structure and/or conformity required to construct an addition to an existing dwelling for use as a limited accessory apartment. Parcel is in the residential B district. Good evening.
Good evening. Nancy Antonopoulos. I'm here on behalf of my father, David Sprang, Seven Princess Ave. We're proposing a LAA for him to reside in, and I'll be living in the main house.
Okay.
Okay.
Very succinct.
There's all kinds of visuals.
Unfortunately, they're not very, kind of hard to see.
Which ones do you want me to?
I guess of concern is the size, is that?
I don't see that.
Jose, did you have a chance to?
You can't read the dimensions. They look like they...
Do we have a hard copy?
I do, but I don't have large scale on this.
You know the size off the end?
The total square footage, it's, I think it's like 2467.
Of just the LLA?
Oh, the LLA, it's 746. It's on the first page.
In narrative form or in write...
Oh, okay.
Or right here?
On the first page. It's, it's highlighted. Seven forty-six square feet.
You said it's a second, a second.
Yep, there it is, yeah.
Oh, second link.
Yep, yeah, seven hundred and forty-six for the in-law apartment. According to the architect. It is attached?
Yep.
Are there any questions of the applicant at this time?
Everything seems to be right in order.
I agree. My letter. We've gotta get the Fire Department to learn shorthand. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at two oh three Concord Road and finds the following.
It's not two oh three.
It's Seven Princess.
It's Seven Princess.
Okay. Uh, this one says two oh three Concord Road. I think I can wing it. Office has reviewed the proposed, oh, it still says three oh three.
It's, it's actually a typo when they submitted. The letters reference it's Seven Princess, but in the letter itself, it still references.
Proposed limited accessory apartment at Seven Princess Avenue. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at Seven Princess Avenue and finds the following. The entire home shall be upgraded to comply with the latest addition of the Massachusetts State Building Code for smoke, heat, and carbon monoxide detectors. The proponent shall submit plans for review to the Chelmsford Fire Prevention Office via the Town of Chelmsford Online Permitting Portal. All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors required shall be marked on the plans prior to submission for review. This department is concerned that as more than one dwelling on a property and an occupancy should made identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as Seven Princess Ave and Seven A Princess Ave. Both addresses must be visible on the building to the street. The applicant shall make the application for an address to the Chelmsford E nine one one committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Druiz. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded on the deed. It is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve of this plan with these conditions. I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Danielle Kostopoulos, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. And I have a letter from the Chelmsford Police listing Seven Princess Ave and showing no concerns. Uh, the end of my letters. There's no neighbor letters here. Nope, that's okay. Gonna open this up to the audience?
I'm assuming that's family.
Yeah, wait, I'm sure that is. Seeing none other than a, a rogue support.
I propose we, uh.
Close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. You're very good at it, Charlie.
I'd make a motion to approve this limited access apartment for Seven Princess Ave under section one ninety-five six dash one. With all the red is being written in, being read into our permitting process.
And I would like to second that motion, Chairman.
Second by Jamie. All in favor?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look at Nancy when I say this, but everyone in the.
Did not look. Nancy, and how is she gonna?
I'm failing here.
How is she gonna check us on that once she had to recruit, accuse herself of them? We're gonna really be in trouble.
Right.
Do you want to take a couple minutes now or do you want to table it around the next agenda?
What do you want?
I'm able to do that. Does the, the board want to, uh, just read the minutes real quickly and approve or change or disprove as need be?
I have no say.
Do we have them? Via email, is everybody able to access their email?
So we have two sets, right? Is there a?
This is March third? This is just March third.
It's just March. Oh, you and I weren't here.
I thought I saw.
Yeah, Jose, I think, uh, we're good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jose.
Thank you. An eleven and thirteen, uh, Third Street did find a way to get this done without, uh, a special permit or.
I was gonna ask you about that, because.
Did they go with single-car garages?
Exactly what they did. Oh, good. It's, uh, obviously was, was concerning to me that, uh.
Probably not what they wanted, but that was the best way to do it.
What I felt was a reasonable request was, uh, it was, it was just hard to, to understand the harm.
Right.
But I do understand the point of view and, and I, uh, you know, I'm trying to figure it out, but.
I'm glad they went with the single cars. I guess, I, I know we talked about it to him.
Yeah, it was, you know, and, and you, you have to understand your limitations, so.
Thirteen.
Continue.
Did you write these seven?
I don't think I wrote them.
Very detailed.
Oh, for which, uh?
March third.
They were written by Vivian.
Vivian. You know Vivian, right?
A Vivian room?
Yes.
Okay. I like them.
Good catch. So the, um, unanimous voting all says six to zero and there's only five members.
That was the continuance, the.
They're all of them on like every, yeah. Every, all the, all the motions.
Yeah, that should be.
Five to five.
All the unanimous ones say five.
Anyone?
Make a motion to approve the minutes pending the change of five voting members on, what is it, March?
Marking unanimous.
March third. Second.
All in favor? We are current on our meeting now. This is crazy.
And motion to close the hearing.
All in favor?
She's stolen thunder.
She's outta here.
See you guys on May fifth.
Cause you're fifth, because of the agenda.
Is that May day?
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo.